How are you?
I'm great.
Hi Vern. You doing?
Good.
Good. Well, thank you. Good to see you.
Thought we were still waiting.
No.
Do you want to cover next? It's a tiny little group. You're in charge.
I am. Charlene in charge. I know. Could be fun. Yes, it is. All right. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming to the Pontiac special meeting for the Planning Commission on May 23 of 2022. We have a very short agenda tonight. We're going to review our minutes and then we're going to go over some new business. We have a special presentation regarding the shores at Crystal Lake, and then we will have public comment after the presentation. So let me introduce everyone that is here. I have Vernita Duval on my far left, Mike McGinnis on my immediate left, Tim Shepherd is on my right, and I am Mona Parlov. So we will take roll call.
Yes. We got Vice Chair Parlov.
Present.
Commissioner Shepherd.
Present.
Commissioner Roth Cross. Absent. Commissioner Duval.
Present.
And Commissioner McGinnis.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Excellent. Okay, first thing is we will review any amendments to the agenda. I don't believe that we have any, do we?
We do not.
Okay. I would like to have an approval on the agenda. I need a motion, please.
Make motion that we approve the agenda as is.
And a second?
A support.
Excellent. Roll call, please.
Yes. Commissioner Duval.
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Shepherd.
Motion to approve.
Commissioner McGinnis.
Yes, to approve.
And Vice Chair Parlov.
Yes, to approve.
Yeah? Motion passes.
Great. Next, we have our meeting minutes from April 6 of 2022. Does anyone have any adjustments or changes to the minutes? Vernita?
Yes, to what?
Any changes to the minutes? Okay. Mr. McGinnis?
No, and they do a very thorough job.
Excellent. Mr. Shepherd?
No, no change.
And I don't have any changes either. So I would need a motion, please, to approve the minutes as is.
Make motion to approve the minutes as is.
And a support?
I'll second that.
Excellent. Roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Duval.
Yes, to support.
To approve the minutes?
Yes, to approve.
Okay. Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes, to approve.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Parlov?
Yes, to approve.
And Commissioner McGinnis?
Yes, to approve.
Okay. Motion passes.
Excellent. Okay, so next on our agenda, we have some new business. We have a special presentation about the shores at Crystal Lake. It will be presented by S.K. Lakeside Development, LLC, listed as the owner. Their address of 535 Branch Street. And I would like for the presenter to approach the podium so you can give us your information. Please state your name and address for the record.
Joseph Brown, 4041 Maple Road, Bloomfield Hills, 48301.
Thank you. All right, so please present.
So first, I want to thank you for doing this special meeting. I know this isn't your normal night, and we appreciate the time. My name's Joseph Brown. I'm the Senior VP of Development for S.K. Investment Group. And we have been working on this project at Crystal Lake, the grounds, the peninsula on the opposite side of the golf course for the last about year and a half, just acquiring the property, putting together some ideas conceptually. And we started meeting with a couple city council members and some planning and the mayor to show them the ideas we had and we wanted before we get too far down the road to bring it to the Planning Commission and to the community to get some ideas, their feedback. Also, we wanted to show the community that we do want to engage with the community in this endeavor. We are developers. We do quite an extensive amount of multifamily. We have just over 1,500 properties throughout Michigan, Florida, and New Jersey. And we are hoping to add this development on Crystal Lake to the portfolio. So with that said, I'll give a couple statistics. I don't know, are we going to put the slides up?
Yeah, we're trying to get that to...
Okay.
Technology.
Technology. So, well, first of all, the property is a little under 40 acres. Everyone who's from the city knows the history of the property. It was obviously populated several years ago with several houses. Those have since been demolished, and it sat basically vacant for several, several years. Through the process, we have worked with some people in the city that were responsible for cleaning it up multiple times because they would clean it up and then dump, people would dump back on it. So it's just been sitting there. We first walked the property with our partners from out of town two, a year and a half ago? Two years ago. And as we walked it and we went on onto the old pier that was falling apart, we just looked back and we saw this could be pretty special development. One thing we, when working on this with the city, we wanted to make it very clear that this is not a gated community that we are trying to build here. It is going to be accessible to the public. What I'll point out while this slide's up there is you have the perimeter road that runs along the lake, and we are keeping that as a public road. And also, the other side of the road that's on the water will be public ground so that Pontiac residents can still enjoy the lake and everything it has to offer from a non-sports point of view. I'll run through these real quick. So we have several strategic partnerships in the area. Jason Krieger to my left and Mr. Klatt also are obviously a local-based architectural firm. They do a lot in multifamily. And we wanted to engage them as we could only take the vision so far and they could help solidify it. Obviously, we're using Spalding Decker for engineering, and then Mr. O'Brien with O'Brien Construction. He has vast, extensive knowledge in the multifamily space. And he's actually was here for how long, Tim? 20 years in Pontiac. And so he has a good history or good knowledge of the history of it. Myself, we already introduced, so I don't, there, this just gives us a little background on S.K. And you'll be able to read this, I think, further. We're going to share the presentation online so people can read through it. But the three partners that are involved are Svi Coslo, Amnon Zakai, and, or Zakai, and Yannir Hayden. Yannir runs a lot of things in the Florida market, and then Amnon and Svi run more the Michigan and then Florida markets and some other things. As you can see, manages 300 residential properties in Pontiac. And we're doing other states. The company does maintain a strong track record if you look at some of the other developments, which will again be posted online for you to understand the depth of their knowledge. As you said, it's not just new development, but it's also, it's elevating old projects and trying to rehab homes, single-family homes as well for the community. This gives a background on Krieger Klatt, and I'll let Jason talk more about that as he comes up. Again, extensive knowledge in the, in the multifamily space. And as a matter of fact, when we were looking for an architect, we went through several in the area, and we just loved what they've done in this area in Michigan, but also Florida and some other things. Project overview, a couple. So this, obviously, we can all read this, but the basic thing is we talked to a lot of people, and there's no or very little postgraduate housing in, not just in Pontiac, everywhere. And then there's a lot of, of young professionals that work in Pontiac but do not live here. And so we wanted to develop this resort-style community on the water to attract the young professionals and to attract people outside of town to move in and to give them some options, lake living. And obviously, it's so centrally located to Auburn Hills, Rochester, Bloomfield. So it's right in the middle there, and it's easy to get to these other hubs for work for people that would like to live in this community as well. A little bit about the amenities of the program or of the development. And again, we'll go into it more, but we really wanted to use a lot of green space, a lot of parks, public parks. We're also leaning green, if you will, looking at all different power options, whether that be solar or geothermal. Also, what we wanted to kind of work on was doing our part to diminish what's been, you know, over the last few years as the digital divide that you keep hearing about. So our particular complex will have high-speed fiber throughout the whole complex that you can be in, in a park, on a bench, by the water, in your, in your condo, whichever way. And you can use that and have that high-speed fiber there for everyone. Now, of course, we can't do it through the whole city, but this is maybe a step. Also, electric vehicle charging, trying to be more forward in that regard. And I can't iterate enough, green space, walking trails, biking trails, you know, canoe, paddle boarding, using that lake for whatever it can. So we do want to keep the nature in, in the project. I know this is, this is actually a very sensitive topic because we had been here a couple of years ago when the Planning Commission agreed to vacate the roads. And we, during that time, I know there were several people in the community that spoke, you know, about memories from the site. They didn't want it turning. They wanted to be able to still use it and access it for biking, for walking, for running. And we wanted to make sure the city of Pontiac knows that we're trying to keep all those things. I think I kind of ran through this, but essentially, we want to offer quality housing. This will have, I'm going to run through the numbers here as I have them, but right now, we're projecting about 1,300 units, $1,299. Studio, 162 studios, 710 one-bedroom, 402 two-bedroom and 25 three-bedroom. It's got over 2,000 parking spots on the grounds, 18 buildings. We are doing, we are petitioning eventually that when we come in for site and plan approval, this be a mixed-use development with a very small amount of commercial, but enough where this is, again, a walkable community, where you can go to the little market in town, in the area. You have daycare. You'll have little restaurant, coffee shop. Not to take away from the downtown, but to augment it. And obviously, with new residents, they'll be utilizing the downtown more. But that, that would just fill that immediate need in there to allow people to walk across the street for this or that and not have to get in their car as much. We put in here, it's got daycare, community buildings, the Shore Pavilion, which I'm excited for Jason to show, really keeping the community in mind with the tip of the peninsula and doing a nice, excuse me, community building there. The parks on site is about two and a half acres of park, as I mentioned. Seven, about seven acres of shoreline and pavilion. Again, 50, about 35 to 50 feet of retail area. And then they're in the development itself, not on the tip. We have proposed a community building for the residents to be able to use with swimming pools, things like that as well. And I already mentioned the kayaking, paddle boarding, ice skate rental in the, in the winter. And, you know, also allowing local retailers that would like a footprint in the development to be able to lease space and engage with the community on that. Also, we are looking, we haven't sat on an actual builder yet. Tim is our consultant for that. But we are looking to engage community partners, Oakland County, Oakland County contractors, if possible, Pontiac contractors, if possible. Obviously, this is a larger-scale development, so they would be able to handle, have to be able to handle that. But, and yes, I forgot to mention, so we are, we have contacted the Oakland County Sheriff, and we would like there to be a mini station or rest station for the sheriff in this community to, again, enhance safe walkability throughout the community. So I'll let you take it. Okay. Thanks for your time.
Thank you for the information.
Good evening. Jason Krieger with Krieger Klatt Architects. That's 2120 East 11 Mile in Royal Oak. I just want to say we're extremely excited to be here. This is an amazing transformative project. And, you know, this has just been a wonderful process so far, and we're looking forward to continuing on. So I'm going to walk everybody through the proposed development, more or less like the layout, the planning, what we're thinking about, and how it's going to be designed. Everything right now is still very conceptual. We're coming here to see what kind of initial feedback we can get. So there's still, I mean, while we have the numbers in mind that we want for units, parking, et cetera, it's still a little bit in flux. So let's get going. So this is the site, right here on the peninsula, downtown Pontiacs, up here to the northeast. I think pretty much everybody knows where the site is. So just brief history, and again, I think this is pretty well-known. I want to thank Mr. McGinnis and Mr. Casano, who's not here tonight. They really helped us out with some history lessons out there. And so everything from the workforce housing in the 40s to when it became crystal, or lakeside housing in the 50s, when it was torn down in '21. It was really great. And we're including these, these slides, not just to talk about that, but to let you all know that we're inspired by the history. And our plan is to integrate that into the design somehow. We don't have a plan yet, but we want everyone to know that we're not going to just forget about it. We're going to make sure that it's known and somehow, you know, celebrate the history. This is the site as it exists today. You can still see all the roads exist, as I think most people know. Buildings are gone. It's overgrown, and it's ready for some redevelopment. Quick facts, 34 acres, 1.5 million square feet residential, 1,200 units, 13. Again, it's all a little bit in flux, about 50,000 square feet of retail. So this slide right here, these aren't actual renderings of the project. These are, you know, when we were doing our initial research, we do what a lot of design firms do, and you go out and you look at examples of other projects that are similar. We might pull from some of our projects, or we hit the internet, you know, we reach out to other friends of ours in the community. And what we wanted to show here is that what we, what we envisioned is that it's a lively community. It's active. There's, there's public space for people to use. There's green space. The water would be activated with a nice boardwalk. And the idea here is that even though these are private residences who are living there, the space around the residence, it's really for the public. You know, we're going to design it like streets. The, the commercial space, anybody could go into. The parks, anybody could go into. So our opinion is that the more lively, the better. So this is just a very quick site analysis, what drove some of the design. We saw extending Branch Street straight down. That seemed like a great gateway to come into the community. And then what we were able to do is we divided it up into blocks that are around 250 to 300 feet apiece, which are perfect sizes for blocks. We have street parking, both street trees, lighting. And we're proposing to keep, as Joe mentioned, keep the ring road as public. Currently, the roads in the center would be private. I'm using air quotes. It's anybody could go there, but it'd be managed and owned by the developers. And then what you'll see in the upcoming renderings is that we kept the height, the taller buildings in the center, and we stepped all the buildings down as you get to the water in order to maximize views. And also create, you can see, it's very porous around the perimeter. It allows us to get detention basins, park space, and other amenities like that. So I don't, I don't need to run through every single one of these buildings, but at a high level, this right here, C is the daycare center that we're proposing. We have that at the outside corner of the site. It's a better way to manage traffic. These are all apartment buildings. So the four, five, six, seven, eight, five and six are the taller buildings. Right now, they're proposed at 14 stories, but then you go down to five stories here with seven and eight. The center road here is more of a boulevard. We have a little central park in the middle. And then, as you can see, it's, it's surrounded by park space as well. Our community building for the residents is B. That's somewhat centrally located. It allows people from the different buildings to utilize that. Down at the tip of the peninsula, that's where we have our pavilion. So we have some images of the pavilion. These are all conceptual, but we want that to be a very special place for the surrounding community and other neighbors to come, come utilize. We, we still have not programmed all of the shoreline yet, but you'll see some images that kind of, you know, imply what we're going to do. We want to make sure that, that the bike trail runs all the way through, bike and walking, as well as the road. Okay, so this is a graphic that shows what's, what's technically public space. So the road and all the way out to the water is public space. This internally here is private. However, we have some retail planned here in the city center, and people can park on the streets. They can hang out in the park. They can, you know, we have little pocket parks proposed throughout. That could still be used as, as public. These are just some other images that represent some of the thinking, you know, little parks, street trees, walkways, you know, probably a little bit more contemporary-type architecture. And then these are some slide, or images, I should say, that represent, you know, what we're picturing around, around the perimeter of the site, maximizing any kind of water sports, fishing. Mr. Casano gave us a nice, an hour-long lesson on the area, and said that when he takes his bike through there, that that dock is packed in the summertime with fishermen. I thought that was pretty neat. So, you know, we just want to make sure we celebrate all of the wonderful outdoor activities that could, that'll be going on here. So this slide right here, it's showing some green infrastructure items that we've been looking at. We are required to capture the stormwater on site and then manage it. It cannot just run off into the lake or into the, into the, you know, sewer system surrounding it. We, we're looking at detention ponds, but also some other creative ways. It's more green infrastructure, whether they're bioswales, rain gardens, permeable pavers. We don't have a solution on it yet. It's not finalized. We're waiting on some soil borings in order to start looking at that. But this slide is showing, you know, you that we're looking at that. We want to be as green as possible on this project. This is a phasing plan. I figure this might come up as a question. It usually does whenever you have a project. So this right here is what we see as phase one. It's this yellow. And then phase two, you would kind of work your way out to the west, you know. So what we discussed was, you know, how do you do construction, move people in, and then keep going on to the next phases without disturbing them. So this was one of the schemes that we came up with. So really, you know, you're going to have the ring road and likely the site, all of the public elements built. I'm not sure about over here, but then we're going to work out to the west. And then the next, I think, seven or eight slides are renderings. Now, again, keep in mind that these buildings are not designed. These are more or less massing buildings, just showing size and scale and shape. But you can see here, this would all be green and lush. We have a wonderful park that is on the west side. It's a little hard to see, but, and we have another closer image, but this is the pavilion. In this scheme here, we have a green roof, so folks could go up there and sit on the roof and look out over the lake. Large boardwalks, some new docks for kayaks boats, you know. That pavilion, you know, what we picture is that there might be a little, little coffee shop there. Somehow, we want it activated year-round. Be coffee shop, could be ice skate rentals in the, in the wintertime, kayak rentals. There's plenty of space there to hold events. And so again, the goal, we're still doing a final program of it, but the idea is to keep it active year-round for everybody. So this is the community building that we discussed. It'd have a pool, tennis courts, you know, maybe pickleball, whatever. We would have to, you know, we're still finalizing it. There's a central park. And then the retail would be right in this area here. So the thing I want to mention is that we're, you know, we're not only celebrating the lake, but, you know, this is a large site, so we want to make sure we're creating active space internally as well. So maybe there's a, maybe there's a holiday party here in the middle. You shut down the streets, and then you could have vendors or things like that. You could have a farmer's market on the weekends, you know. We want to make sure that, that the internal part, portion of the site is just as fun and cool as, as the perimeter. This is the pavilion right now. This is the pavilion right now, so we picture like a nice walk-up on a grassy roof. There could be seating up here, down in here, tucked under here. We had some restrooms planned, and then we'd have some little shops under here. And then there's places for people to sit and, you know, relax and enjoy things. So the next steps, and you all can read this, but basically, we're gonna keep going through the site plan approval process. We're gonna be getting feedback, comments, questions, we're gonna take that, absorb it. We are gonna be doing neighborhood meetings. Those dates are not established yet, we're working on that and... What's that? Oh. Those dates are not established yet, but we are going to, you know, we want the community to be involved, frankly. And that's... Anything you guys wanna add? No? Okay. Anyways, that's our presentation, so we're available for questions.
Thank you very much, there's a lot of information.
Yeah.
I bet you go through everything so far.
Sorry, we threw a lot at you, sorry about that.
That's okay. Does anyone else need to share anything from your team?
Oh, Joe wanted to say, is he good? Okay, okay, I think we're good.
Are you all good? Okay. Great, well typically what we do is we go through each commissioner, I go one by one, and we ask each commissioner to ask any questions that they have. We can get some information started. And I will start on my far left, Commissioner DeValle, do you have questions for our presenters?
I do. How much, what percentage of capacity would you expect to be filled upon completion?
That's a Joe question. Right, so if it's going in stages, you're saying that you would kind of complete it, fill it up to 80% or something, and then you'd move on to the next phase, the next phase?
80%?
Thereabouts, sure.
Have you engaged any of the community? And I know that there's a church over there, New Bethel, have you engaged anyone in that community to talk to them about?
I believe Joe, I believe you guys have in the past, no? Yeah, well, it's a start of, yeah, it is.
Is that a yes or no?
I guess it's a no, yeah.
Okay. And you did also mention the Pontiac Farmers Market. There was a Pontiac Farmers Market event yesterday, and I think they would certainly like to be engaged with you as well, so I would add that to your list of contacts to make. That's all I got for now.
Okay, great, thank you.
What's that?
Commissioner McGuinness, please.
I approach and relate to that question.
Oh, sure, please step forward and state your name, please.
Svi Kozlo from SK Investments Group.
Okay.
So about your question as far as engaging the community, so this is the first step of engaging the community, and we anticipate a couple of town hall meetings. And all this will be prior to the official site plan approval meeting that's gonna be down online in a couple of months.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner, anything else, Joe said?
That's it?
Yeah, okay, Commissioner McGuinness, please.
So there was mention of 1,299 units, so that's referencing residential units when all phases are deployed.
Everything.
Does this material share for us how many residential units per phase? So for example, in Phase One, what would we be looking at in terms of number of units from that phase?
I can add it, if you give me one second here. 232.
So Phase One, 232 units spread over how many buildings?
One, two, three buildings.
Three buildings.
Plus, there's a daycare in Phase One, and actually, we have a couple of townhomes, so it might be more like 240.
Understood. And is the expectation with this project, with this development, that all units would be market rate?
Yes.
And is this project contingent upon receiving any tax abatements or other tax considerations that would be authorized by the City of Pontiac?
I don't think it's contingent, and that's where, yeah.
So it's not contingent, but obviously, we're gonna approach the relevant people to find out about what we can get out.
Is the understanding that this parcel qualifies for brownfield redevelopment? Does this meet the legal definition of brownfield?
According to our initial consultations with advisors, it seems like it will.
And is any rezoning required to make this project viable? Or does the present zoning provide for the work that's forecasted?
So right now, Vern, correct me if I'm mistaken, it's zoned for multifamily, but in the, I don't know what it's called, the future or the optimal vision of the city for this property is entrepreneurial. And we would have it rezoned as mixed-use just for the specific commercial that we would like to add.
Mr. Gustafson, would you like to expand on that further? Does the present zoning allow for this project to be without consideration?
If we look at the overall plan, say, the master plan for this, they would go through many hoops and hurdles to get it planned the way they're looking. Height variances, commercial, special land use exceptions. So the thought right now has been to work closely with them, and I'm jotting down some notes as we're talking, in regards to basically come up with a new zoning district. We do have what we call MUD, Mixed Use Development Zoning District in the city. And that's really related solely for Clinton Valley site, where Stone Gate and FedEx is located and all of that. So where our thought is, as the development plan becomes more finalized, we'll be putting together a new MUD, Crystal Lake Zoning District, to allow for what that plan represents.
And the community center, which phase is that fall under?
Phase One, and so does the pavilion.
And what is the anticipated, so it's on private land? It'd be operated privately, has there been any conceptual contemplation on sort of what the end result would be for the pavilion and the community center in terms of operability, management? The expectation is that not only would residents of the shores of Crystal Lake be able to benefit from it and see it as an asset, but that all residents of the greater Pontiac vicinity could actualize and visit and benefit as well?
That's correct, so, and correct me if I'm wrong, but they would both be managed by the shores?
Yeah.
Correct? Now, the community center, that's meant for the residents only at this time.
So the pavilion is the more public?
Yeah, exactly.
External asset, okay.
Now, the one thing that we were discussing at the community centers, maybe there are some meeting rooms or other things that people, you know, or like small banquet or something, but it's so preliminary, you know, the only thing I can say is that the pavilion is open for the general public. The community center, we're still working through the program on that.
Well, I can share, Councilman Katholique James would be very interested to hear that there are sort of civic spaces that would be available for rent, for, you know, family gatherings, for wakes, observances, et cetera, that if somebody wanted to have a function right now in the city of Pontiac, there's a lot of limitations in terms of, you know, functional, multipurpose spaces that if it's, you know, well-done, well-staged, at an affordable price point, that I think that would be very well-received by the community. Now, the pavilion sort of comes to the point of the peninsula, if you will. So the way in which the parcel is laid out, that private property that the entity owns, that sort of comes almost to a point with that peninsula, correct?
That is correct, let me...
You would not be infringing upon Crystal Lake Park owned by the City of Pontiac?
No, no, in fact. There you go, this is a good depiction of it.
Right.
The road actually, the public road actually cuts through the property. This is all on private property, all through here.
And this is a good visualization to share that, I mean, it's such a community jewel and an asset that Crystal Lake Park represents for our residents, but as it presently stands now, it is not easily accessible, it is not easily navigable, it is not easily even identified as a park or a public space. It's like this murky, sort of hard-to-reach and overgrown area that, no matter what the final point comes to be, that is something that is a strong priority for the community. To be able to bring that park back online, be able to have access to it, is really important. As was shared, I was able to have a conversation with this architecture firm recently, as did Oakland University Professor Graham Casano, to try and relay some of the very fascinating and very rich history that this piece of land represents for the Pontiac community for centuries. And there's an opportunity for us as a city, through the park space, but also through the private development as well, to amplify that, to choose names and references that pulls that to the surface rather than glosses over it. And in terms of wayside markers, other destinations, that makes Crystal Lake Park, the Crystal Lake shoreline, and this entire vicinity all the more valuable in terms of telling Pontiac's story and being accessible public spaces. So that's something that, when it comes to ultimate site plan and, you know, assets and amenities that would benefit the community, I'll certainly be looking for that. I do have some additional questions, but they aren't necessarily for your development team. Mr. Gustafson, can you share with the planning commission and the community, what's the current deal in terms of water quality with Crystal Lake? And it's okay if that's not your territory, but it's, the Crystal Lake, originally called Mud Lake, used to be smaller and it was dammed, it's part of the Clinton River, and so it was dammed up to make it even larger, that the lake was changed its name from Mud to Crystal in part because it was going to be connected to the city's water supply, and so they wanted to make it more appealing. But when it comes to the quality and the, you know, environmental regulation as it relates to Crystal Lake in terms of fit, the safety of fish to be consumed, et cetera, do we know presently where things stand, and it's okay, we could do some research with other city departments and county partners, but do you have any familiarity or information about that?
Actually, I do not. It's a great question. I know that, I believe we can probably garner some recent studies that were done in and around that area for some grant funding. I know that Alex Borngesser in our office was pulling some good information, so I'll touch base with her and obviously DPW, plus I'll reach out to my friends over at Water Resource Commission.
Because this would obviously lead to some very comprehensive change, but in a positive way in terms of making, opening up Crystal Lake for more residents in various different ways. So we might see some usage or, you know, environmental impact changes as well. If the concept becomes the finished product and there's 14-story apartment buildings, is that, would that be the tallest structures in the city of Pontiac?
It's 28 north.
Not sure how many floors are there?
I think it's 15.
Okay.
Yeah, we're close.
Okay. And right now, if I'm a resident in the condominiums on the south side of Crystal Lake or the apartments at Crystal Lake, and I'm looking north, what I see is the lake, but then in the distance is just sort of green and overgrowth. So this would change the line of sight for residents in some of the existing developments. I think that's all the questions I have right now, except to say, would the city still need to take action in terms of those interior roads, formerly Howard McNeil and Carl Walter and Clovis Drive? Would those need to be vacated?
Yes, that is correct. We had some internal conversations with the team, and that was the, one of the first things I would like to get resolved, is the vacation of what actual roads they would like to vacate. And then from there, have a clear understanding regards to the outer ring road, so to speak. I think it's Carl Walker?
Carl Walter, W-A-L-T-E-R.
And seeing how that plays into it, what remains. That's definitely, I would say, one of the first steps as they're developing their plans to get that through, get that survey revised. I think the next thing would be do is, once we'll have next steps, from my standpoint, I can see it, where we would be looking at zoning text amendments, which that new zoning district and playing it up, or have a better understand in regards to regulations as part of that development as relates to Crystal Lake. Once that is solidified, we would have to go through rezoning process to go from an R3 to a MUD, Crystal Lake, which obviously would go in front of you as a commission and make that recommendation on the city council, and then following up with site plan review. And a lot of these things could happen simultaneously, or we can, we'll be able to figure that out once we work with them a little bit closer in regards to the overall structure of where they're at in their process.
In an ideal timeframe, when would Phase One construction begin and complete?
Well, if it was up to speed, it'd already be underway. Ideally, beginning construction would be next year, probably, you know, I guess ideally it'd be spring of next year, is that fair? Spring, summer of next year. And then Phase One, and this is actually about Tim's here, two, year and a half, two years? Yeah. No, more, probably two. Yeah. Eighteen months to two years.
And there will be many external factors that might impede this, but in an ideal scenario, when would all phases be complete and that the shores of Crystal Lake would be, you know, the phase process is done and it's now a viable, active development?
All done. Correct, yeah, Phase One would include the infrastructure. It'd be about a two-year process per phase.
And my final feedback and question is that this falls within Councilman Melanie Rutherford's District One, and a priority for her is, one, for all parts of District One to be thriving, clean, and viable, but that she is very interested in seeing that community engagement happens every step of the way, so that way, there's communication to residents. This has significance beyond just the boundaries of those that live immediately near it, as your research probably pulled forth, it's a very significant and rich in history as a site. But that there, the potential and the hope and the possibility that many residents have imagined for this space means that it's important, whenever possible, to provide those opportunities and outlets for that feedback to come forth and for those questions to be answered. And I bear in mind that what we see conceptually may not be what comes for the ultimate site plan, but as we've talked about as a planning commission, this is a best practice to have a preliminary site plan. For example, this isn't exactly at that point, but we had a similar situation with the Rise Commercial District that's planned for Vanguard Drive, where even before they get to the point of submitting site plans, they're laying it all out for the people of Pontiac to know, the planning commission and staff to know, so that way, we can course-correct early on rather than invest a great deal of time and resource and attention to something that may ultimately not be applicable. So thank you for taking the time to be here to submit very early, so that way, the Pontiac community and city leaders can get a full sense of where this proposal is coming. And that concludes my questions, thank you.
Thank you very much. And Commissioner Shepard, your questions?
So I did have a chance to meet with these folks. I met with the applicants, I think maybe a week ago, to kind of hear it. So a lot of my questions were answered, so I got to fire a lot, a bunch of them at them. I do appreciate what they're doing with the 12-foot, I think it's 12-foot around it, kind of the parklands, and I think there is a park next door that's worth maybe mentioning. And I don't know exactly what's gonna be done with that, if that's something that, I forgot the conversation, if you guys are working on that, but to link that park with that, I think is spectacular. I know a lot of the developments before were trying to kind of annex those, you know, those areas and do it as their own, you guys have kind of incorporated it, so keeping it there, I think, is a smart idea. It's spectacular, I mean, I appreciate the fact that it's market rent. I mean, I appreciate the fact that it's market rent. I don't know if everyone else will, but I think that's a great idea. I think it's a, you know, it's a, something we haven't seen in this city in a long time. And they've thought this through. The questions that I asked were kind of already, they already knew the answers to these, so it was pretty interesting. It'll be interesting to see what the community thinks of this. But just from that conversation, it was impressive. If it's, if they're going to do what this is, and I think that's our job, is to make sure that that all follows through, then it's a great project. And just the tax base alone is massive, right? I don't know what that property pays right now in taxes, but, you know, this is as big as, almost as big as the Amazon project. So this is a, this is a massive project. And I don't think they're asking for too much from the city. So I think you're going to have a pretty impressive change. Not that that's our decision, but that's interesting for everyone else to know. And that's all I have. Mike's usually the one that can fire off all the good questions. But a lot of my questions were answered. I think it'll be interesting to hear what the community thinks on this, so.
I've got another question.
Absolutely, go ahead.
What is your expectation for the pavilion? What do you see happening at the pavilion?
So for the pavilion, so again, that's the public building. And what we see is, what we want to do is activate it so it's a year-round focal point of the site. So there might be kayak rentals or paddle boards, things like that. Something to draw people out and get to use the lake, maybe even boat rentals. We're going to have fishing docks, things like that off of it. And we're also looking at doing little food vendors, so to speak. So maybe there's a coffee shop, or there's a little ice cream shop. Maybe it's something that opens up in the summertime. And, you know, so we're working through that, but what we want to do is create something that's always going to be active. We don't want it ever to slow down. And we really think it will be. I mean, once, once, once that opens up and you have the green space around it and you have the ability for people to sit out there and enjoy the dock, enjoy the water, you know, get something to snack on, you know, I think Sundays will be just, you know, killer there. I mean, you're going to see that it's going to be like that. And then the other thing is, don't forget, we also have, this is the pavilion, just to the northwest of it, there's a large park green space, which has yet to be programmed. But again, activity, people playing frisbee, hanging out with their dogs, whatever it is. So that's what, we want to make this, you know, a great, great place for everyone, everywhere, you know, everyone to go to.
Thank you. I'm done. Thank you, okay. This information, just so everyone knows who's in the audience, and thank you for coming tonight, and those who are watching, the information we have in front of us, we, as commissioners, didn't have anything other than what we're being shown at 6 o'clock tonight. So we didn't have the opportunity to review the information prior to this evening, and it's pretty overwhelming, as everyone could see from the slides. When I'm seeing the renderings, and I'm very supportive of development in Pontiac, I think it's critical. I am a real estate broker, I understand what they're trying to do here, and it's something that we desperately need as far as new opportunities for places to live in Pontiac. So thank you for bringing this conversation to us. The development that was here, that is no longer at the site, the Lakeside Housing Complex, the infrastructure that was there to support all of those individual households, are you going to need to remove all of what's there? What's the condition of what was there, and can it accommodate what you're trying to put on the site?
No, chances are that would be removed. But we did do some initial studies for the leads that are coming into the site, and those look like they're okay to handle any kind of additional residence and buildings, things like that. But we're completely changing the street layout, so that's all going to have to get taken out. Unless there's something that's beneath the ring road, and I don't think we have everything mapped out yet, but it'll be new.
Okay. Just at first glance, when we were looking back at one of the first slides to show what was going to be put onto the site, it feels very, yeah, thank you for going back, back, back. One of the first ones. I think that, okay, go forward again.
This one?
That's probably the first one. It feels very bottom-heavy. I don't know how else to articulate what I'm seeing. But there's so much that you're trying to accomplish on the site, and what is around it is very different, as the city remains itself.
Meaning north of Gillespie, for example?
Exactly.
The vacant land.
North, east, west, you name it. The only thing that's different, or that might be a little more similar, is what's to the south, which are the condos and the apartments. But everything north of that is housing stock, and it's all residential, single-family. It's all from, you know, as late as the 40s and prior to. We don't have a lot of new construction in that area. So this is going to be so different. And not that that's a bad thing, but as I'm looking at your rendering, I'm seeing, it seems to me that all your buildings are backwards. Why are you giving all of the parking the benefit of the view of the water?
Well, right now, we still have views out of all of these, this face, this face, this face, this face. And then what I didn't mention is that these are rooftop amenities, here, here, there, there, and there. So these folks, if you're out on the rooftop amenities, or if you're in the floors above that, you're getting the benefit of the water.
Okay. The total number, and I'm sure these numbers have been run already, I can't imagine that you'd take this project without knowing what these numbers are. What are the rental rate ranges going to be? And what is going to be the total income that's produced when everything is occupied on a yearly basis?
That's definitely not my question.
So we're still in flux on what the total number's going to be. Obviously, we want it to be profitable. Market rate is somewhere around $2, $2.50 per square foot. And that's what we're striving for. So obviously, doing the math, 600 square foot unit, you'd be somewhere around 1,200, 1,300, depending on where we go with that. And then all the way up to the larger ones, the three bedrooms, which are going to be north of 1,000 feet. So obviously, depending on the mix, which we gave you our conceptual mix, that will eventually dictate the total amount. But however, the project, in its first iteration, when we met with Mr. O'Brien, was 700 million for the actual development cost. We peeled it back from 2,000 units to now somewhere around 1,200 to 1,300 units. So we anticipate the investment being somewhere between 300 and 400 million.
Okay. So let's just go, well, you know how it is, when you start your construction, it's always more expensive.
Yes, slightly, too.
Let's just use the 400 million. So if you did 400 million as the investment, that's, you know, your sunk cost, so to speak. So what do you anticipate the return's going to be yearly with everything is occupied? Just from your estimation?
Well, I can tell you that we're looking somewhere around a five cap, six cap, seven cap would be our hope. But again, I can't give you the exact numbers. I can, once we actually get in, they're building the buildings now that will actually be there. And then we can put it on and say like, okay, this many of this, this is our target, so now this is where we're at. And that's one of the things we're working on with the financial modeling. We have, there's an investment fund for all the basic stuff, and then we'll be using capital sources for the rest of the money. So it'll have to make sense to the developer. We'll know more, we'll get back with you on an answer on that.
Okay, great. Do you have all your funding secured at this point?
We do for all the initial steps. We are working with the fund that we've previously worked with in New Jersey and Florida for some other projects to do the balance of it.
Okay, so the initial steps include what?
All of your site plan approval, your infrastructure, everything we've done to date, which has been a couple of years. I think we have about 5 million in or so now. And so, yeah, we're good for this off costs. We're working on some other things with the state as well.
Okay. So potentially, you're looking to the state as opposed to the city?
Yes, state for some state grants, some, you know, obviously for the site. We have to meet with Oakland County Executive, Colter, and his staff as to where, this is a tricky one, because the lake is actually maintained by the county. So we have to go with them, ask them what they need for the site. And if they, they need certain things, and that's going to obviously push us into looking for our capital stack and some state funds and whatnot.
Okay. Before I leave this question about the development itself, what's the anticipation for the number of one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom units? And the square footages for those?
I'll break it out to where we are to date. I have it here, I believe. So to date, we have studios, so studio's going to be, we see them a lot now. Micro lofts in Detroit, a lot of that's going on, and it's 450 square feet to 470 square feet would be a studio. And we have that allocated at 162 units. The one-bedrooms, we have allocated 710 units. Two-bedrooms, 402, and three-bedroom at 25. And again, those will, promise you, will change as we get the actual buildings, that might, it'll go up or down in different areas.
Okay. And then the square footages for the one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom?
So your one-bedrooms are going to start north of 500, 556. And then your two-bedrooms are going to be between the 6 and 8. And then your three-bedrooms at 8 and 12.
Okay. And now I'm going to pivot to Vern for a quick moment. How does this set with our minimum square footages?
Well, correctly, given the fact of, in our current ordinance, the one-bedroom units would be less than what's required, which was 600. So again, we'll have to take a look at that, our, at new MUD Crystal Lake zoning requirements, and bake that into those, these requirements.
Okay. And then the studios, do we even allow anything as small as that at this point?
We have in regards to particularly downtown. We work with our building official, based upon the square footage of their actual living space, particularly the bedroom, to allow four units, particularly in a couple of buildings that were proposed, which haven't been built yet, we were looking at 350 to 400 for those micro-units.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. If we can go back to the graphic where it shows the different phases of the different colors?
Sure.
Please? Okay. So as we're seeing the light yellow, the pink, the purple, and kind of the orangey color, those are all private property, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I've got a little bit of green on the east side of the peninsula. I've got a little bit of green on the west side of the peninsula. I have a very slim amount as it gets to the south side of the peninsula. I see a road that goes into private property. So as the public, as the residents are coming to this development, they are technically not, they could be trespassing.
Sorry, hit the wrong button. No, this is actually on, well, this is public
Right.
and here.
Right.
And this is something where, I don't know exactly how it works, but this is a, this is a public right-of-way that is going through the site. So they're not trespassing, it's literally a public right-of-way. Right, now, correct, Vern?
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so the pavilion, though, is private?
That would be technically private, that is correct.
On private property, yes.
Okay. And you had talked about the community space was something for your residents. So would there be an opportunity to do some sort of sharing agreement with the residents of the city? Because it's owned by the shores of Crystal Lake for that pavilion? Or is it just an assumption that the residents can use it? I guess, how can, how can I, as I represent my constituents here, how do I know that they would be comfortable with your development based on what I'm seeing, that it looks like they would be on your property? If they want to use your pavilion?
I don't know the answer to that. I mean, it might be an agreement, the city?
Okay.
You know, but I don't want to speak for ownership on that. But to me, that seems like the only way to do it. I don't know, Joe, if you have any thoughts on that?
Well, the pavilion is on your property, but you're saying that the residents of the city can use it, not just the residents of the shores?
That's correct.
So how do we, how do the residents know that this is going to be something that will be truly in effect if this were to move forward?
So to answer that, I'll tell you a few things. We have spoken with Mike and Melanie with regard to engaging the community in some town halls. We're looking at what venues to use them at, but we want to, we want to get the message out that this is, we are maintaining the exterior of the complex for public use. And we want them to know they're welcome, and we appreciate them coming, we want them to come. The pavilion itself, we are activating for the residents of Pontiac. We do have, if you recall in one of the other slides, we have a community center for the development itself, that's further in the community
Right.
with pools and that. But this one, we want to make sure that everybody knows it's public. And I think word of mouth, we'll get out there through town halls, and people will know, and we'll have some sort of agreement with the city on making sure to fill that need, as well as signage at the outskirts of the, directing, you know, residents to a pavilion, you know, beach access, pier access, things like that.
Okay, all right.
And if I, if I may through the chair, I think it's important to note within, and we'll probably bake into our new zoning district, that MUD Crystal Lake, there is a requirement in the current MUD in regards to a development agreement, similar to what was crafted when they did the M1 concourse. And so that would be an opportunity to kind of maybe answer and fill in the blanks and provide some stronger language or teeth that's agreeable between the developer interest and also the city.
Okay. Thank you for that, that's helpful. On the SK Investment Group overview, it says today, the group manages 300 residential properties in Pontiac specifically, with an additional 15 active investments and three development projects currently underway. Could you explain that in more detail, please, for us?
Sure. So the 300, they're mostly single-family in Pontiac. There's a couple multi-families, but mostly single. And that's been collected over the last
Three to five years.
And, you know, we will buy a block of 20 or 30 homes from somebody that's wanting to sell their portfolio. So, you know, as we get them, sometimes it takes a while, you know, with so many properties, to get them up to speed, but that's, that's in Pontiac. The others are New Jersey and Florida. And the New Jersey, the specific one that we're working on there, is a new construction. And Florida is multifamily more than anything.
Okay. So the additional 15 active investments are not in Pontiac?
No. Include Pontiac.
So 300 single-family homes, plus 15 more in Pontiac, but 15 that also are in Florida? I'm not clear about what this 15?
15 other investments throughout Florida, New Jersey, and Michigan. Like, we have some things in Detroit as well.
Okay. So, but for your Pontiac investment, it's the houses?
Correct.
Okay. And the three development projects currently underway are not Pontiac? It's exclusive of what you're talking about this in front of us? Okay. These homes that you own in Pontiac, is the intention to keep them in your portfolio, to maintain them as rentals? Or are you trying to position them where people then can become homeowners from your sales to them?
To date, our, our fund is rental-based. So we would keep them that way. We don't have a plan to turn them into a sale item. That's not to say that we wouldn't. Go ahead.
So today, they're rental, and we use some financing instruments. So currently, some of the funds can't even sell the properties. But when the financing instrument is lifted, so we definitely look to sell, sell off parts of them, primarily to homeowners. And according to the market, we decide if to keep some for rent or to sell all of them.
Okay. Are all 300 properties registered with the city?
Yeah.
And everything's up to date, there, there's nothing that's?
There are things that are, but essentially, yeah. Also, I wanted to add, there are 300 properties in Pontiac, but we but we have about another 200 in, not in Detroit proper, but metro Detroit. This includes Warren, East Point, Harper Woods, and a bunch of other cities.
Okay.
And just a publication came out today announcing that we won an RFP with the Lansing Housing Commission for about 220 units to purchase from them.
To purchase from?
The Lansing Housing Commission.
Okay. In Lansing?
In Lansing.
Okay.
And to keep them in their current status.
Okay. Thank you for that additional information. Bagley is in pretty poor shape. That's your main street that's running north and south to the east of your property? I don't know what the long-term plans are for that road, but it needs to be given a lot of love yesterday. If need be, is that something that you can work with the city on to improve? Or is that, we're on our own with that? What are your thoughts on that?
Well, our, our, our point is to make the streets coming into the development drivable and, and not potholes and all that. How we work that out with the city is a conversation. We're going to have to get in, whether it's a development agreement. And as we dig in, we'll be able to get you an answer better, better on that.
Okay. Do you own any land to the north of Gillespie?
We have options on proper, about 50 acres there, yeah.
Up to the tennis courts?
Yes.
Up to the, do you own the tennis courts?
Not the tennis courts, but up to the tennis courts.
Okay. Up to the bubble?
Yes.
Okay. What's the anticipation with those options?
Well, I mean, depending on how this goes, we, we see that if we could continue it up, develop more development. But again, this is our first, this is what we're focused on now. We don't want to promise or plan something for those before this. Because as he said, each phase is between 18 and 24 months. So, we're talking, this is about six years, seven years of development. And through the course of that, we'll be able to, you know, how it's received, things like that will help dictate what we do going north there.
Okay. Okay. Did you also acquire Bethune?
I'm sorry?
Did you acquire Bethune School? Is that your property too?
That is not on our property, is it? Yeah. It's, it's not on our property. Northwest, right?
It's along the, it's along the Clinton River Trail, which I think you guys called the Pontiac Lake Trail.
Yeah.
You're right up.
It's a potential possibility that it's in... Well, that, that might be in one of the options.
Okay. All right. These renderings, of course, are lovely. They're very city-centric, like downtown Chicago, there's Miami. They're lovely, and I know they're just renderings. And I guess I'm just kind of thinking out loud. They just don't seem to really apply to what you're doing here, where this is more of a residential?
Can I speak to that?
Yeah, sure.
So, as Jason said, a lot of what we do in this stage is conceptual, putting, you know, basically conceptual blocks and buildings in there to represent and give you a scope of what the project's going to be. But one of the things we, we did, and I didn't hit, hit it earlier, but one of the things we want to do is make it seamlessly flow with what is in, in the surrounding areas. It's hard to do with single-family surrounding it. But we do want to use more forward-leaning materials, updated, green, all those things. And that's going to be part of the challenge, but also part of the, you know, fun is finding that way to make it integrate with what is there. Obviously, we, these are, those are more Miami, you know? That's not our, our vibe. That's not what we're going for.
Okay. That makes sense. I think those are the questions I have for the moment. I'm sure there's going to be many more coming your way, but I appreciate everything thus far. Does anyone else have anything right now? Yes, Michael, my goodness.
Mr. Gustafson, if you could relay this to perhaps your colleagues in the executive administration, but back-of-the-napkin math indicates that once all phases are done, we could be talking about 2,500 to 3,000 additional Pontiac residents. And I'd like to see how that math shakes out in terms of potential city income tax revenues, the property tax generated from these, you know, 36 to 40 acres. What would that be looking at in terms of the benefit to the, the Pontiac taxpayers overall? But also, the, the further pressures that places in terms of fire prevention, public safety, et cetera?
Traffic.
So, that we're sort of...
Traffic.
Yeah, getting the sense of what we're looking at. And based on the early conversations that, you know, we're not talking about, you know, the way in which it's coming together that we shouldn't hopefully be behind the eight ball, but I still want to keep that top of the conversation so we know what the implications and the pressures that that'll place on the roads, on the, you know, public services, on public works. And it's a good problem to have, but we'll actually have to bear the cost of maintaining Crystal Lake Park because people will be in it all the time. And so, there will be costs associated with that as well. So, I just wanted to add that as an addendum question, but more so to flag for city staff when we can. Thank you.
Great question. Thank you.
Okay. I think that is all we have for you this evening, gentlemen. Thank you for bringing your proposal to us.
Except to say, we encourage you to stick around for public comment so that way you can hear residents' questions or ideas as well.
We will.
Just please. And we look forward to having more engagement with your ideas and the residents and neighbors too.
We will be. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, we are going to now move to public comment. So, what we would like to do is invite people to come to the microphone. Please take about three minutes of time to state your thoughts. Anything you'd like to talk about? Hopefully, we're going to be talking about our agenda item tonight. And we will ultimately take questions from whomever has them, and then we can address those questions with the shores at Crystal Lake developers when we are back with them again. So, please come forward and state your name.
Good evening. My name is Robert Bass. I'm the president of, what was the station name? I'm sorry. I'm the president of the Community Citizens and District Council in District One. And it seems from the beginning that this would be a great development for Pontiac, also an expensive project. And that's one of the things that I just wanted to say. With some of my concerns, my particular concerns, I look forward to having an ongoing communication, open communication with us residents because I see some things that I have concerns about. And one of the concerns is, have we checked into the underground river flow and how they run in that area? Because if you're going to be building buildings that big, you need to know if there is river, little river flows underneath that because it won't support it. So, that's one of my concerns, but I do look forward to speaking with you because the development is a little pricey.
It is pricey.
And I'm also concerned with the community impact it's going to have on those homeowners that are already there. And are they going to be comfortable with that type of facility? And are there going to be changes to the houses that they already own? Will they be buying them, fixing them up so that they look comparable to what they're building? Or are they going to keep those 60, 50-year-old houses that's there? 100-year-old houses? So, there's a lot that needs to be communicated before we say, okay, this is what we want. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I look forward to talking to all of you at some point. Thank you.
Good evening. I am Dr. Deirdre Waterman. As you know, you're recently retired mayor. And glad, first time I've been back since I sat on the City Planning Commission with you, Mona.
Oh, well, it's great to be up there.
So, yes, great interest in this project, and with good reason. The Crystal Lake property and the surrounding property, that is the city park and easement and the marshland, is the largest undevelopment lakefront property in Oakland County. Has great value, and I think people know that. In other areas in Oakland County where they're tearing down million-dollar homes to buy, to build, building houses on these acreage at great value. This is a great jewel for the city of Pontiac, and it has great memories too, that we want to be preserved, and the access that people remember to that lake. There's still a boathouse on the, on the part of the property that is now privately owned. Now, this project and this description, and I know we're looking at just a concept plan right now, has progressed a long way since Vern, we saw a presentation, or you saw the presentation, that I think was brought to you by the SK Holdings people, as well as, I think Ahmaud Taylor was part of that presentation as well. And I see now they have developed more with, but more density of that. So, as I heard the discussion, I'm glad all the interest in that, and a lot of people remember how we want to maintain public access to this, this land, which is so valuable. And it would be helpful if, you know, somewhere along the line, Vern, you'd get a chance to show the people what is the adjacent to this property. The, I don't know whether the green around the border is supposed to represent the easement or just this green space, but actually, the city owns the easement all the way around the border. Okay? That is city property, and it's the right for the city to have access to that as well as access to maintain that. So, that needs to be determined. And that easement extends all the way across the northern border of that Crystal Lake property because next to it, you mentioned there is a city-owned park. Now, I know this is a great legacy for the city of Pontiac, a great value. And I'm just going to share with you, as I've heard some of the questions, I think I can share with you some of the things that I know about this development because it came of great interest in during the terms when I was mayor. And I remember, early on, there was a group that came and wanted to put a gated property, gated community on there. And I said, no way. You know, we're not going to deny people access to their lake. And so, there's not going to be a gated property. I can tell you that right now. That'll never get approved. And then, it was purchased by an owner who, and I don't know whether you guys are now in possession, you own it, or whether you are doing it on the concept, but it was purchased by John Hance. And John Hance originally came and said, hey, look, I'd like to know if I can buy all the city's easement and the park for $250,000. And I said, are you kidding me? Okay, no. That's not going to happen, not for $250,000. And we feel a little insulted that you would try to do that, knowing what else in Oakland County. So, they changed, and we negotiated a little bit more. And he came and he said, well, how about a million dollars for projects and such as that? But I said, he wanted to have the streets vacated. And as you remember, Mona, that did vacation, did come before the planning commission. We approved the vacation of the streets. And then it was turned over to the attorneys to draft the easement. But that never got completed, Vern, to my knowledge. Because you mentioned Professor Graham Casano, who has done a lot of research about affordable housing, and in particular, this site. He came and let us know that his research showed that the easement that was given to the planning commission was not complete. There was others. So, it got stalled in terms of the city attorney finishing the vacation. It was first covered by Paul Thursum. He got stymied. Then they turned it over to George Kontis. He never got it finished, and to this date, I understand that problem still has not resolved. So, just to let you know, those are certain things to be looked out for.
Thank you.
Now, I hear the development, Tim, you talked about comparing this to Amazon property because I think this, the Crystal Lake property is 78 acres? Is that the, the Little Peninsula is 78 acres? Is it? The park is 35, I believe. Peninsula's 36, okay. Well, Amazon is a lot bigger. Amazon is 125 acres. And the other comparison with Amazon is, Amazon didn't ask for one single tax incentive. And that was unusual because in every other city where they'd come, I've talked to other mayors, they asked for lots of incentives. They asked for not one incentive. They just said, I want you to, can you help us so we can work fast? We've got to get this open fast. And I said, fine. They did all the street repairs, all the infrastructure improvements. So, Amazon doesn't compare with this because it's much bigger and because they wanted to do it on their own, and they did it on their own. So, I just wanted to share those little bits and pieces with you. We kind of feel like a protector of the legacy of this is to Pontiac and the value. And also, it brings to fore, as this property is developed, then let's also see about developing the lake, you know? The lake needs to be dredged. And now that we have, has been accepted, a master plan for our parks and recreation, we're now be eligible, well, we have one more step to complete. We have to find about 28 acres of land that we own, the DNR. But we'd now be eligible for the DNR, and they are the people who can help us maybe get the money. And we have $38 million in ARP money. We're looking for something transformational to do. That would be transformational if we were to develop that Crystal Lake front, that beautiful Crystal Lake, as along with other developments on there. So, I just wanted to share what I know. It's a great property. It's a beautiful, and I look forward to the further development and having that be used for the great benefit of the development of the city and for the legacy that we remember of that area.
Great. Thank you, Doctor.
Good evening. My name is Malkaya Newman. I'm a resident of the city of Pontiac and a former resident of Lakeside Homes. So, and a former Housing Commission member. I was on the commission when Lakeside was torn down. So, I have a very... I'm very interested in what happens to Lakeside. I went to a National HUD conference, I believe it was in 2004, and I asked the Housing Secretary at that time about the Lakeside project. And, and he said, I know about that project because there's only two low-income developments that were built on water in the whole country. I want us to be thoughtful about what we do with this property. I'm not saying that you haven't been thoughtful. I'm not in your pockets. But one of the things that disturbs me as a resident is I don't feel that we've always been wise in our decisions, especially when it comes to brownfield and other tax abatements. We give away a lot to people that come and promise us a lot, but we don't always get what we've been promised. And the finished products have not always been what they were purported to be. So, as a resident, a former resident of Lakeside when it was at its worst, I'm not against market rate. But if there's any tax money involved in this project at all, I'd like to see mixed use. Mixed use, including low income. And it's nice to have rental, but we are oversaturated with rental properties as it is. We need homeownership in this city. We need people to be able to, when, when you own your own property, it's a different, it's different. So, I just want to caution all of the parties concerned. And I echo Mr. Bass when he said, we need to be involved. I would have liked to have had been in, the city citizens would have been involved as you were developing this project and not waiting until you got to this point to invite us in. Because until you talk to us, you don't know what, what we want and what we would like to see. Again, I'm not saying no, but I'm a little disappointed by high-rise buildings on that site. I think that we could do better than the high-rise on that site because lakefront property is prime property. There was a house on James K. that sold for, that was for sale last year for over $300,000. It sold this year for over $6,000. One year later, why? Because it was on the lake. We need to really be careful what we do with this property. We need to really be careful what we do with this property.
Thank you.
I am Regina Campbell. I live in District Five. However, I do have some history with lake, with the, we call it the project. So I had a lot of history with projects. My grandparents lived there. There's two, there's three things that I like to say. Number one, I'm excited about the development, economic development. I think it's, it's great that we've got this development coming. I'm sure the new administration and the new team will do their due diligence when it comes to voting to see if this is going to move forward or not. What I'm here today, I'd like to say that I am the Vice President of the National Association of Black Women in Construction, and we talk about community benefits. I'd like to see some RFPs go out to some of the local contractors in our community when they, if they decide to move forward or when they move forward on this project. And, and that's it. We have two construction companies in here, Genesis Construction and R&amp;L Construction and Development. And there's a number of other contractors within the city that is capable of doing some work with you all. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Carlton Jones. I live here in the city of Pontiac. And I was born and raised in District One and real familiar with this site. As a matter of fact, I was a part of the Housing Commission when it was being demolished. And I know there was a lot of residents had a lot of input about that site when it was going to finally come back, that it was some stated things that they would have some opportunities to some of the residents, that it wasn't going to come back the same way, but they would have opportunity to come back to Lakeside at some time. But I want to say that I'm very proud of you guys as planning commissioners. You asked a lot of pertinent, good questions. A lot of questions that I would have asked. So I'm glad, I'm glad to see we got housing, we got planning commissioners that's asking the right type of questions. Malkaya, who was speaking, I can feel for her, for what she's saying. Because we did say there was going to possibly be an opportunity for some moderate, low-income people to come back to that site. So, and also I agree that when you come with your perspectives of a site, it's good to get your information from those people who's going to impact initially because it's hard to change courses after you've already put so much time and money into it. So, you know, you say you have public meetings, you know, just be open, be open to the public's input. I'd love to see that site developed. I really want everybody to know that I think that site is one that's going to really drive a lot of Pontiac. I will say that we need to see the bigger picture, though. When you have control around this site, we need to see the bigger picture. You've got an option on a lot of property around that site, we need to see the bigger picture. Of course, it's going to impact a lot of people around that site when that development is complete. But kudos to our planning commissioners, your questions. I do have concern about the traffic, those type of things, the funding, you know, I'm not quite sure what I heard. I think I heard that you have funding, but I think I also heard you depending on some other things to make it happen. So when we go down these roads, and we've done a lot of times here in Pontiac, you know, I don't, I like to come down and be very supportive, but I don't think any of us got to waste months and months of time and then it seemed like the project just goes dead because of funding or some things that people just don't look up and be honest upfront. So I want to see the site developed. I want to be very supportive. I do represent workforce development for opportunities for people in Pontiac. We've got an organization called Talent Development Coalition, which is about helping develop people in Pontiac for opportunities for engagement from not only construction, but all types of engagement. So I would love to be able to be able to talk more about how we can play a part in that. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to, you can speak? Of course you may. You are a resident, are you not? You're here. Please speak. Tell us what your thoughts are, please.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Melanie Rutherford. I have the pleasure of living in District One. I was, I was raised on 98 Clovis, 398, 394 Howard McNeil is where I lived at when I was 17 years old. So I have a special affiliation, my grandmother, my great-grandmother, my father, and then me. I was the last part of our family to live in Lakeside. Had my own apartment when I was 17 there. I have a hope for that to be redeveloped so that all of us could be inclusive. That's why I ask, and I am asking that you are involved. Nobody's made any decisions without thinking about the community. That's why we're having community meetings so that they can't be, no one feels shunned or shied away. But at the end of the day, we have to look at the future. And we have to get to the place where we want to see things happen so that we all benefit. It's all cohesiveness. And so I'm in supportive of the project because I simply want to see something happen. I want to see something different. I want to see something empowering and moving. And that's why I keep talking about Hatchet Estates because it's history over there of West and Ave. If you didn't know, Albert Hatchet grew up over there. And you have Kenny Birch, and you have people who were firefighters and fighters for the community that I watched, who helped raise me in that community. So I want everybody to know that there will have to be community engagement in order for us to stamp the approval on it. No one should be left out. And I've been able to talk to the developers as a citizen and I felt hopeful of what's going to happen. So let's all be open to new things and new ideas. And I just want to say, I think this is a great opportunity for the district I love, the district I was born and raised in, and the district that I represent, District One. Have a great day.
Thank you. Does anyone else have a thought they would like to share? Please do. Sure, you can go back if you'd like. Yep, yep, please do. It's all important.
I just get the young lady's name right here in the red, but she mentioned about prime property.
Yes.
On the lake.
Yes.
My, we used to fish there all the time. At the time, there was, I think there was a boat launch there? Is it still there? Is that part of your, your?
Right now, it isn't.
There's not, well, the boat, the boat, it's torn, but I'm saying, when you redevelop that boat launch, it will be there and will that be open to the public or that would be, that's part of the pavilion? Okay. That's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Is there anybody else? Even one little question might trigger a response that we need. Anybody? Yes, please.
I'd like to know when the community engagement is going to start, when you're going to start having the town halls.
We're still standing.
Okay.
We don't have a date for it yet, but we'll make sure everybody's aware.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that question. See, it's very important. Yeah.
I'm sorry, I had to say this. Sometimes the word does not get out very well in this town, so any and every way that you can get the word out would be helpful, including the churches. Just, you know, think outside the box because this is a very, 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 very important step. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Great comments.
Anybody else? Nope? Yes, please.
Do, do you all actually own the property right now?
Yes.
You do? Or is it option? Is it owned?
Owned.
So, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good question.
Okay. All right, if nobody can think of anything else, I will close public comment. And thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. It's very important, as you know. And as I pivot to my left, since we have our city council member here with us, if you can keep us posted on city council as we learn when these engagement opportunities are happening with developer, that would be wonderful as well.
And Mr. Gustafson, can you share what's the expected, you know, ideal timeline? When would they next need to come before the planning commission or a city entity next? Is there already a target for a site plan review?
There has been some initial discussions, but I'm not too sure if, if they, how far along they are as relates to finalizing this concept plan into what I would call more of a design development set of plans. And that really has to involve obviously a lot of infrastructure, site engineering and those issues to make it more formidable. So as you know, we have great members of the fire department here too, and they get actively involved at that level of primary site plan. So we'll be coordinating definitely with the architects and engineers and Spelling D. Decker and Krieger Klatt and so forth to get, to find out where they're at from here on out. And once we do hear that, I mean, we'll keep you abreast in some, any correspondence and memos that can be, be part of our packet, our packets, and then also understanding when other public engagement will be ready.
Very good. Do you have something else you'd like to add, please?
Yeah, so in response to the public engagement, there's a website that's active from today. It's theshorescrystallake.com.
Okay.
And it has a, like, message or something that you send an email and then we'll respond to the email and contact whoever sends the message.
Great.
Theshorescrystallake.com?
Exactly.
Does it contain some of the materials that?
Yeah.
Beautiful.
Oh, yeah, there's an option that we might post on there also the upcoming events. And I'm sure council will, will partake in the efforts to let that information be public and maybe mention it once it's set in the council meetings.
Very good. Very helpful. Thank you for sharing.
Great opportunity. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Do my commissioners have anything else they'd like to say? All good?
Other comments, no?
I do, actually. I was as concerned as Malkaya was about, I know that overwhelmingly there are many renters in Pontiac versus single-family homes. And I was going to say something and I didn't, but you did it. And so I was just as concerned about that as well. One, it's more of an observation than a, than a comment or, you know, a complaint. But I'd like to see single-family homes on that, on that luxury property as well. So that's just, that's just me. So I'll just leave it, I'll leave it there.
Great, thank you. And if not single-family homes, then maybe ownership in the way of condominiums or something that people can own.
Exactly.
As opposed to renting.
Yeah.
Great. I like that idea, too.
Yep.
Thank you. Okay, Vern? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Just want to share, Mayor Grimal has informed us that Lucy Payne has submitted her letter of resignation to the planning commission. Ms. Payne was a candidate for the Pontiac Charter Revision Commission and was successfully elected. And so we, I just wanted to salute, I'll repeat it at our regular meeting as well, but I want to salute her years of service to the Pontiac community, being on the Pontiac Planning Commission.
Absolutely.
Doing very thorough and thoughtful work. And the city council is actively, it's already done one reading of the zoning map amendment that was recommended by the planning commission for 108 West Lawrence. And that second reading is scheduled for tomorrow if the community wanted to have further engagement or opportunity for feedback. That's on the docket for the Tuesday, May 24th, our regular city council meeting. That was a recommendation from the planning commission.
Excellent. Great. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Vern, anything from you?
No, I think it has a great opportunity to see some incredible development here coming. And I, I think wholeheartedly, you know, when we talk about the development of this type, I, as, before I came here and I saw Bloomfield Park turn into a ruin and, put it this way, that's not going to happen on my watch since I'm here.
Thank you.
So anyways, final comments. But I, and I think that, I think the owner and the team understands that, so.
Thank you for that. We appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. All right, well, I would like a motion to adjourn our meeting.
I make a motion that we adjourn.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone, for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.